Good afternoon and welcome. Welcome to the council meeting of Monday, March 24th, 2025. Please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chambers by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short moment of silent meditation and remain standing if able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. The order of business of the City Council is follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak must first sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public addressing the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization if they represent one, and their address unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Each speaker should state whether they are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item, and testimony is limited to five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads the item and the applicant has presented. After public comments, the applicant may make one short rebuttal. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an item on an issue not on the agenda for that day nor planned for a future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. Madam Clerk, will you read the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for our City Council agenda of Monday, March 24th, 2025 is our consent agenda, Sections 1, 2, and Sections 3.
Is there anyone present who would like to present an item on the consent agenda? Seeing no one presenting an item on the consent agenda, would anyone like to comment?
My name is Anastasia Fenner. I'm going to waive my address for my own personal safety. This is a letter from a Palestinian prisoner in Louisiana, March 18, 2025. My name is Mahmoud Khalil, and I'm a political prisoner. I am writing to you from a detention facility in Louisiana where I wake to cold mornings and spend long days bearing witness to the quiet injustices underway against a great many people precluded from the protections of the law. Who has the right to have rights? It is certainly not the humans crowded into the cells here. It isn't the Sangolies man I met who has been deprived of his liberty for a year, his legal situation in limbo and his family an ocean away. It isn't the 20-year-old detainee I met who stepped foot in this country at age nine only to be deported without so much as a hearing. Justice escapes the contours of this nation's immigration facilities. On March 8th, I was taken by DHS agents who refused to provide a warrant and accosted my wife and me as we returned from dinner. By now, the footage of that night has been made public. Before I knew it was happening, agents handcuffed me and forced me into an unmarked car. At that moment, my only concern was for Nora's safety. I had no idea if she would be taken too since the agents had threatened to arrest her for not leaving my side. DHS would not tell me anything for hours. I did not know the cause of my arrest or if I was facing immediate deportation. At 26 Federal Plaza, I slept on the cold floor. The early morning hours, agents transported me to another facility in Elizabeth, New Jersey. There, I slept on the ground and was refused a blanket despite my request. My arrest was a direct consequence of exercising my right to free speech as I advocated for a free Palestine and an end to the genocide in Gaza.
Ms. Fenner? Ms. Fenner, please pause.
Parents and mothers are once again cradling two small shrouds, and families are forced to waste starvation and displacement against bombs. It is our moral imperative to persist in the struggle for complete freedom. I was born in a Palestinian refugee camp in Syria to a family which had been displaced from their land since the 1948 Nakba. I spent my youth in proximity yet distant to my homeland. But being Palestinian is an experience that transcends borders. I see in my circumstances similarities to Israel's use of administrative detention imprisonment without trial or charge to strip Palestinians of their rights. I think of our friend Omar Katib who was incarcerated without charge or trial by Israel as he returned home from travel. I think of Gaza hospital director and pediatrician Dr. Hussein Abu Saifia, who was taken off the Israeli military on December 27th and remains in an Israeli torture camp today.
Take a recess.
Palestinians imprisonment without due process is commonplace. I have always believed...
Good afternoon. The session has resumed. Let's go back to consent agenda and find out, is there anyone here in chambers today to present one of the items that is listed on consent? Seeing no one here to present an item listed on the consent agenda, Madam Clerk, would you please move us forward?
We can vote on these items. Item 1A is reappointing David Johnson and Craig Geis to the Building Code Board of Appeals for terms to expire April 1st, 2028, introduced by Duden.
So moved?
I'll second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion, councilors? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1B is reappointing Ronald Geary to the Board of Mechanical Examiners for a term to expire April 4th of 2028, introduced by Duden.
So moved?
I'll second.
Second, Carlson. Discussion? Please call the roll, Madam.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Short consent this week. We'll move forward to items of liquor resolutions, public hearing.
I'll call item 4A, application of Heine Gill, Inc. doing business as Dish Restaurant for the addition of a catering license to their Class I liquor license at 1100 O Street.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Hi, how are you? Rachel McGill, here for Heine Gill, Inc., also for the Sitch, so I'm here for 4B as well.
All right.
Yeah, we're trying to get our catering license. We'd like to bid for the university liquor license. So that's what we're trying to do through both Dish and Sitch.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Excellent.
Are there any questions for Ms. McGill?
Just for clarity, you already have a license, just an expansion of your existing license.
Just adding a catering, plus K, onto the regular liquor license already, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions? Good luck to you.
Thank you, guys.
Is there anyone here in chambers today who'd like to speak in favor or in opposition of this motion? Either 4A or 4B. Seeing no one come forward?
Councilwoman, may I read item 4B for the record?
You did not read 4B, but she spoke on both, so please read 4B and then we'll move forward.
Item 4B is application of the Sitch LLC doing business as the Sitch for the addition of catering license to their Class I liquor license at 1140 O Street.
Again, if there's anyone here who'd like to speak on these items, either in favor or in opposition, please come forward. Seeing none?
Madam Chair, again, seeing, as you cited, seeing no one coming forward, I would like to put forward a motion that we approve both items 4A and 4B.
I'll second.
Second. Carlson. All right. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right, we can proceed to public hearing resolutions. Madam Clerk, please call the first item.
I'll call item 5A, approving an interlocal agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and Department of Health and Human Services, Public Health, Tuberculosis for Tuberculosis Services from January 1st, 2025 through January 30th of 2025.
Good afternoon, Director Kernan.
Good afternoon, City Council Chair Washington and City Council Members. Carrie Kernan, Health Director with the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, 3131 O Street. This contract is between the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services and the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department specifically to providing case management services for active clients or patients with tuberculosis. So the services that will be provided by a public health nurse is everything from direct observational therapy where they ensure that they're taking their medications, to working with the physicians, working with the hospitals to gather records, picking up meds, just providing education and facilitating medical appointments and spudum collections, just navigating to control that, get those cases handled. Happy to answer any questions.
Do councilors have questions for Director? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here today in chambers who'd like to speak on this item? Either in support or in opposition? All right, we'll proceed.
I'll call item 5B, approving the contract between the City of Lincoln and US Foods, Inc. to provide food and food-related products for the City of Lincoln for a four-year term with two options to renew for an additional two-year term pursuant to RFP 24-189.
Good afternoon, Director Jones.
Good afternoon, Randy Jones, Director of Aging Partners. This is a contract between the City of Lincoln and US Foods. This is for food-related product and some non-food product that is used to provide meal services through Aging Partners and some of the services that are provided through Parks and Rec. It's a $377,000 contract. They are a current, we currently use US Foods and are pleased with their performance.
Do councilors have questions for Director Jones? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here today who'd like to speak on this contract, either in support or in opposition? All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, let's move forward.
I'll call item 5C, special permit 25008, application of TMCO Investments LLC to allow an early childhood care facility for up to 30 children with associated waivers on the property generally located at 921 South Sixth Street.
All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council Members. Andrew Willis, 233 South 13th Street. On behalf of the applicant, TMCO, pretty excited to be here representing TMCO on this application. I mean, as you all know, we have a serious need for daycare, early childhood care facilities in the city and most cities. So we have a great employer who is proactively making, you know, making a change here. This, location-wise, just to get everybody oriented. This is... All right, well, I'll keep talking until it pops up. Again, so this is located right south of TMCO. And so that would be across from Cooper Park, Park Middle School. So it's really, you know, a great location as far as that goes. It's a special permit because it's for, the capacity's going to be 30 children. So again, that's, a special permit is required for, if it's for that size of a, of a early childhood care facility. But this really, I think, is a good example of that special permitting process because this really makes sense in this location for this purpose. Maybe it doesn't other places and that's, that's the special permitting process. So again, this is serving those TMCO employees so they can, they can come to work, drop their kids off. There's childcare right there across the street, then they go to work, they're, they're real close. It makes perfect sense. It's adjacent to the park and the school. It really is a, it's a good location. The, there's two waivers that are being requested that are, that were, this has, that were recommended by planning. First is front yard setback, reducing it from 25 feet to 10 feet. That fits in with the neighborhood. It fits, it aligns with, you know, everything else. And also what it does is it opens up buildable area to just push everything slightly further away from the railroad tracks. Just keeping it, it's a safety issue, just to, just to make it a little safer. So that one makes a lot of sense, we believe. And then also the waiver of the requirement to be on an arterial street. Again, the idea with 30 students, if you, you know, they're trying to, it's a traffic issue. But here we have the same vehicles that are coming to, to this location in the morning because they're, they're going to work. So they're, it's not bringing any new traffic into the area. It is, it just makes more sense. So both of those waivers, we think, make a lot of sense in this case, compatible with the neighborhood, really serving that, that need. And this is a special permit. It's a five-year permit, so it'd be, it'd be for five years. These are temporary classroom buildings. So there'll be three buildings, so there'll be two classrooms. And then, and then the third building is office food prep area. There's an enclosed play, play area. There is the, the neighbor to the south, there'll be a fence to separate the properties. So again, this really lines up pretty well with everything and we're excited to see it. You know, this is going to be helpful for, great for the neighborhood and great for TMCO and, and the community. So I'm happy to answer any questions and Diane Timmy Stinton's here to add a little more to that as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Willis. Questions? Councilman Beckius?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Willis, can you tell me about any interaction that you and your applicant have had with the, the neighborhood to date?
Yeah, in fact, I may let Diane answer that question. They've done a lot of outreach and it's very positive, so I may, I may defer to her on that one.
When we get to her, we'll, we'll answer that.
Okay.
So you've been warned.
Any other questions? I have a question for you, Mr. Willis. You mentioned the special permits for five years. Does the applicant have the ability to apply again?
Yep, so the, the idea is with, in, in five years, you know, there's a conversion plan. But in this case, the conversion plan, because these are portable buildings and easy to remove, if there's no application, it would be, take everything off and it's, it's back into, it can be used for residential. Or, or there'll be, need to be another application. So that's, it's, solves the five-year problem and then we'll figure out what happens next.
Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
Ms. Timmy, would you like to come forward? Good afternoon.
Thank you. Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Diane Timmy Stinton, 3420 South 79th Street. I'm the owner and CEO of TMCO. I'm here today to respectfully petition your approval for these waivers for our early learning center, the Prep Academy at TMCO. Prep Academy was created to serve TMCO employees, 40% of which are immigrant and refugee. These are hardworking, blue-collar individuals, most who do not qualify for childcare subsidy. Because of this, many spouses will stay at home, leaving children without access to critical early learning opportunities and women who are unable to pursue vocational training and careers. Our goal in creating the Prep Academy is to give our employees and their families better access to both career advancement and early education opportunities. And we believe this opportunity will be transformative for the families that we serve. This is a valuable benefit to TMCO employees, but it is also an innovative model that we hope will inspire others across our community. And it would not have been possible without the support of our city planning, health departments, and building and safety departments. Not to mention collaboration with the South Salt Creek Neighborhood Association and Lincoln Littles. We believe this project can help shift the narrative around early childhood education, showing that with the right support and creative solutions, we can begin to fix broader infrastructure challenges. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you. Could you tell us a little bit more about your interaction with the South Salt Creek Neighborhood, just so we're aware?
Yes, so we've been to a couple of neighborhood meetings and so they've kind of been in, at the forefront of the discussion around it. We've always been open to talking through questions or concerns. Frankly, the neighborhood is very excited about the vibrancy that this type of project is going to bring to the neighborhood. We also have plans in the adjoining lot and space to create a community mural and a community, kind of like a flower and meditative garden. So what we're trying to do with this little corner of, of 4th and, or sorry, it's 6th and F Street, is to really create a community-facing little corner of town. So, you know, mindful, because the city has always talked about, you know, from the industrial zone to the residential zoning, having a transitional space. And so we're doing our best effort to make sure that it is going to be a beautiful transitional space that is community-facing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilman Weber?
Thank you so much, Chair Washington. Ms. Timmy Stinton, thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedule to join us today. You spoke a lot about the great impacts that this will have on employees. What's, what really inspired this project? Because to me, this is, it's visionary, right? And this is something that I'm trying to think, how do we get more of this in the City of Lincoln? So can you speak a little bit to what led to this application?
Absolutely. So I, I pride myself in being able to say that I know my employees. We have 250 employees and I really get to know them. I think the, the management team and the leadership team at TMCO makes a great effort to get to know their people. And something that I see, and also I just have to say too that my mother is an immigrant. She came to the United States in 1980 with limited English skills and limited opportunities. And so when we talk about doing English classes at TMCO, trying to help people in their career advancement, something that we also see is just the ripple effect of the work that we're already doing, even solely with our employees. So we've had employees, you know, at TMCO where we've heard that because of what you've done, you have helped this employee put his kids through college and, and become successful. And they come back and tell us these stories. And I think about the opportunities, I think about early childhood education. I've always been a champion for that. And thinking about like the disparity of opportunities where we talk a lot about subsidy programs and, and other public benefits. Well, these are families that are hardworking families that simply do not have the access to the opportunity. I see that as an equity issue. And if we can model that and show other companies and frankly, the community and have a broader conversation about the benefits cliff, but also what does equity mean and how can we open up the opportunity to more people in our community, we're going to be richer and better for it.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. This is inspiring.
Thank you so much for your vision and for your passion, for making certain that not only your workers get the, the things that they need to help stay in, you know, stay on the job, be productive, help their families. But these kids really get that early learning opportunity to grow and become very successful students. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Oh, you have one more question?
Can you tell us a little bit about TMCO?
Absolutely. So TMCO, we've been around for 50 years, started in 1974 by my father, Roland Timmy. We're a second-generation family business. We're in the contract metal manufacturing business. Created a lot of metal pieces and have contributed to the city landscape in Lincoln in many, many ways. Some of the most photographed landmarks in Lincoln, in fact, the Sunken Gardens Dome, as well as the big zoo letters at the zoo. And we've always been very, very involved also in our community and supporting our local community as part of our philosophy. We strive to be a good neighbor and a good community member and, and just a responsible corporate partner, so.
I think people at home needed to hear that, so thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here today in chambers who'd like to speak on this proposal, either in support or in opposition? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, City Council Members. My name is Anne Brandt, 3435 South 30th Street. I am the Executive Director of Lincoln Littles. Our mission is to ensure that all children in Lincoln have access to high-quality early care and education. I'm here today to express my strong support for TMCO's commitment to providing and subsidizing childcare for its employees. This, this initiative aligns perfectly with our mission as it removes two of the most significant barriers to high-quality early care and education, which is accessibility and affordability. By offering childcare, TMCO is not only supporting its employees, but also contributing to a broader community goal of providing families with the resources they need to, to thrive. When working parents have access to reliable, high-quality childcare, it allows them to focus on their work while knowing their children are receiving the care and attention that they deserve. This leads to a better work-life balance, higher job satisfaction, and ultimately, a stronger workforce and economy. I always have to mention though, that as a lifelong educator, that it should be enough that this is about the child. To me, that's the most important part, but you always have to mention workforce development and strong economy and things like that, just to get the whole community involved. But the first five years of a child's life are the most critical period for brain development. And quality early care lays the foundation for lifelong learning and well-being, and frankly, is an investment. I urge this council to support TMCO's initiative and encourage other businesses in our community to follow their example. Together, we can build a community where all families, and especially children, have the support they need. the support they need to succeed. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks, Ms. Brandt. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? All right. Madam Clerk, let's move into the voting session on resolutions.
Item 5A is approving in our local agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and Department of Health and Human Services, Public Health Tuberculosis Services, from January 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2025. Introduced by Duden.
So move. Second?
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5B is approving the contract between the City of Lincoln and U.S. Foods, Inc., to provide food and food-related products for the City of Lincoln for a four-year term with two options to renew for an additional two-year term pursuant to RFP number 24-189. Introduced by Duden.
So move. Second?
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5C is special permit 25008, application of TMCO Investments LLC, to allow an early childhood care facility for up to 30 children with associated waivers on the property generally located at 921 South Sixth Street. Introduced by Duden.
So move. Second?
Second, Carlson.
Thank you, Chair Washington. Just want to take a moment. You know, childcare is a critical issue in our community, and it's really exciting to see a company tackle that issue head-on. I just want to take a quick moment to say kudos to TMCO. Thank you.
Councilman Weber?
Thank you, Chair Washington. I want to echo my colleague's remarks. I just want to say how lucky I think Lincoln is to have a visionary like Diane Timmy Stinton and an organization like TMCO to help provide a living with dignity, right? I think that's something really important, and I feel really lucky and proud to have TMCO in District Four and to have them in Northwest Lincoln, and to see this project come to a realization in Northwest Lincoln. And I think we need to ask ourselves, what can we be doing to incentivize projects like these, right? Because this is the type of thing that I want to see on a more regular basis, right? I just feel extremely lucky to get to vote yes on today's decision, because it does create economic opportunity, it creates educational opportunity, and it truly does make Lincoln a better place to call home. And so I'm just so excited to get to vote yes on this project, and thank you for bringing it forward.
Anyone else? Councilman Bowers?
Yeah, I'll, well, just repeat what everyone said, but I mean, I echo, you know, what they said. I mean, like, shout out to Diane and everything that you've done to make this happen, because it's more than just a good idea, right? I mean, it's your advocacy that made this happen, and I don't want that to be lost, right? That you pushed for this to happen, you know, not only for the families that you work with, but then also for our city. So thank you for making our city a better place, and your, the families that you work with, and your employees are lucky to have you.
Yeah. I don't know if I need to add any more kudos, but there were a lot of pieces to put this together, and I know that you learned along the way that this is a complicated process to get to the special permit. So thank you for your perseverance. I want to appreciate and really tell you how much I appreciate your creativity, and the creativity of all the city departments who worked with TMCO to make this happen, because this is, as everyone has said, a really good thing for Lincoln. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. Cookies and milk for all of us.
I want that nap time back.
All right. In just a moment, we'll move forward to public hearing on ordinances, second reading, and related resolutions.
Would you like me to read it?
All right, Madam Clerk, would you read the item, please?
Item 6A is admitting Title 10 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to create new definitions and prohibitions for racetrack and racing, and a new chapter of 10.43 entitled nuisance vehicles, to provide that any motor vehicle in violation of the listed ordinances of the city will be declared a disorderly vehicle and a public nuisance, and to provide that a motor vehicle in violation of the listed city ordinances and Nebraska statutes that is declared a disorderly vehicle and a public nuisance may be subject to impoundment.
All right. So who will begin?
Good afternoon. Chair Washington and council members, my name is John Carlson. I'm here today as part of the team, I'm a small part of the team. That includes the Law Department, and most notably, the Lincoln Police Department. And I would note that Chief Morrow is here, and Assistant Chief Stillie is here, and I'm also here to put the joint presentation with Captain Max Hubka, just to give you some information on some updates that we have proposed for you, the City Council, to consider to reduce dangerous driving here in the community. Those will be updates to Lincoln Municipal Code Title 10. As I'm sure you're not surprised to learn, but we want to reiterate, this term of a value we're trying to achieve with these changes is public safety. Again, it continues to be the number-one priority for our city teams. Along with the City Council and our budgets, we continue to invest in those partnerships, the training, equipment, personnel, and those facilities, to make Lincoln the safest and healthiest capital city in America, one of our stated goals. These public policy solutions are another significant way that we work to improve those safety outcomes for our residents, and I'd like to throw it to my partner here to talk a little bit about the current condition and what we're trying to address.
Council members, thank you for having us. Captain Max Hubka with the Police Department. So the big picture that we're looking at here is addressing the dangerous driving that our officers are seeing on a regular basis. This can include high-speed driving, racing, other reckless maneuvers, and compromises the safety of the public, disturbs the peace of the neighborhoods that they're driving through, and then it impacts our local businesses as well. Our teams at LPD are committed to enforcing the existing traffic laws, then help us reduce the threats from dangerous driving. We've taken previous measures to reduce driving, dangerous driving activity specifically along O Street and other high-traffic areas. Those steps that we've taken include additional enforcement through the use of overtime and state-funded grants, the use of technological tools and assistance from the Nebraska State Patrol's air wing. While we've seen many positive impacts from these enforcement measures, we still continue to see violations continuing and posing a threat to the safety of the public. Our data shows that since the beginning of 2020, dangerous driving activities have contributed to more than 700 nighttime crashes, over 800 injury crashes, and six fatalities on O Street alone. On a personal note, I would add that I'm a, I was a scene commander on three of those fatalities, where very young individuals lost their lives, and that became a personal, that helped this become a personal mission of mine, because we don't want to have to see that on our roads ever again, if we can prevent it. So dangerous driving causes not only physical harm, but also secondary issues, as I mentioned, noise disturbances, trespassing, vandalism, thefts, assaults, and additional tools and strategies are needed to help empower our officers to make changes that we need to see. Lincoln Police Department, the city law team, and other city agencies have all worked together to develop the solutions that we'll be talking about here. The proposed changes before you will give our officers a greater ability to hold reckless drivers accountable and keep them and their vehicles off of the road to improve the safety of other motorists. That means safer streets, safer neighborhoods, and a better quality of life for everyone in the community. And I'm going to throw it back to Mr. Carlson here to describe what the changes are that we're looking at.
Thank you, Captain.
So Council, I know that you've been briefed on a lot of this, but for the benefit of the viewing public, and the people here in the chambers today, we'll just go through briefly what some of these significant changes are and what they're intended to achieve. These additional tools to support public safety include clarifying the code so that the dangerous driving activities are clearly understood, they're articulated in code, prohibited, and make it more enforceable for officers. We've updated the definition for racing, so that it's more comprehensive, and it spells out exactly where those activities are prohibited. Updated the definition for racetrack to prohibit that operation unless they're specifically approved as a special permitted use, which is allowed in Lincoln if you're specially permitted in specific zonings to do an actual professionally-run and safely-operated racetrack. We'll have a new section that defines the disorderly vehicles and declares them to be a public nuisance. That empowers additional actions that can be taken, and that new section will allow officers to impound the vehicles of drivers that are cited for specific dangerous driving violations. So to be clear, it's not for any violation, it's only this specific universe of particularly dangerous activities. That's racing, that's reckless or willful reckless driving, or fleeing to avoid a race. In those circumstances, the officers, besides giving out the citation, which is a discretionary activity on their part, also have the discretion to impound that vehicle if they think that that's necessary in order to prevent that public nuisance from continuing, or that dangerous driving activity to be continued. And as it's noted there, like the citation itself, those police officers carry that discretion to use the individual in specific circumstances to decide when impoundment is a necessary action. If impounded, the new vehicle impoundment penalty would be administered as followed. On the first offense, the vehicle is impounded and towed to the city impound lot, but it can be immediately released to the owner of the vehicle. So if you're driving someone else's vehicle, if it's your parent's vehicle or a friend's vehicle, they will need to come down to the tow lot, they'll need to pay those tow fees and those administrative fees, but the vehicle can be immediately released. On the second offense, however, if you've engaged in one of these reckless or willful reckless driving activities, got cited the first time, the officer made the choice to impound the first time, that's catalogued in their computer system, and yet, a second time, you've been pulled over for willful or reckless or fleeing to avoid arrest or one of those dangerous activities, they have the discretion to impound it for a second time. The second time then, the impoundment period goes up. It's impounded for 10 days then. Again, you must pay the tow fee, you must pay the administrative fee, and there's a daily storage fee, and that can be released to the owner again after those 10 days. We understand, and I know that Lincoln Police Department, the Law Department have worked hard to create an ordinance that is trying to be balanced. We understand that impoundment of those vehicles that are engaged in those dangerous driving exercises creates an impact on the owners of those vehicles, that it is inconvenient, and it does impact their lives. And officers, as we stated, will continue to exercise their professional discretion on when impounded is, impoundment is warranted. But we will also put in, in terms of discussion, that owners, as with all driving and with all lending of your cars, they have a responsibility to safely manage those vehicles, and ultimately, they are responsible for who they allow to drive their vehicles. It may be obvious to say, but removing the vehicles that are involved in dangerous driving removes them from the road and improves the safety for the rest of the driving public that are just trying to maintain and get where they need to go safely. So as part of this discussion and as part of the council consideration, we know that you'll need to weigh those impacts of having to recover the vehicle from the tow lot against the deaths and injuries that Captain Hubka talked about that continued dangerous driving can cause if those vehicles remain on the road. In summary, these changes are intended to improve public safety in our community by reducing dangerous driving and the damage it causes to persons, properties, and the quality of life here in Lincoln. Again, I'll say thanks again to the work that Lincoln Police Department, and Max in particular, have done. The city staff, the Law Department, and the City Council has provided feedback on the concept for a few months now, and we'd like to bring these changes forward. We think that it will put more tools in the toolbox and improve public safety and health in our community. And we have several people here from the Law Department that are available to answer questions now, or certainly will stick around after testimony and come back up and answer any questions you may have then.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carlson. Captain Hubka. All right. Counselors, do you have questions? Councilman Bowers, please.
I just had a couple of quick questions, just to clarify. What is the daily storage fee for the 10 days?
It's approximately $8 per day, which I have been told by people in the know is a very low storage fee compared to other jurisdictions across the country. It varies depending on the size of the vehicle and other things, but that's the approximate amount.
Because if I remember correctly, the daily storage fee for if your car is impounded in the traditional sense or whatever, that's like $80 a day, right?
So I believe how they stack up is there's a $50 tow fee, $50 administrative fee, these all go to the tow company, and then there's also the $8 storage fee per day. That's for a normal type of vehicle, if you have a larger vehicle or vehicle needs some other type of attention, it may have additional fees. So one day would be $108 total fee for a regular-sized car.
And then day two would be $116 total?
Yep.
Okay.
And so forth. So you'd get 80 after the 10 days, maybe that's where we got the 80.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Weber, and then Councilman Duden.
Thank you, Chair Washington. Since we began questioning, I, Mr. Carlson, Captain Hubka, we talked, or I heard a little bit about, to the officer's discretion, can you speak a little bit more to that discretionary authority that the officer has when it comes to impounding a vehicle?
I'll let the captain do that. Chief's available to talk to him. So officers obviously have discretion in all types of scenarios. It's very common that they weigh all the reasonable factors to determine what course of action is most appropriate, whether it's issuing a citation, making a lawful arrest, you know, going to jail with somebody. Towing vehicles is not a new thing to the Police Department. We have a policy in place for towing on suspended licenses. That policy is well-established, and it has criteria that we have to take into consideration before we make that tow. Similar criteria would be used in this situation. So the officers will have that discretion, there's no mandatory aspect to these ordinances. If the factors align that they don't feel there's a need to tow the vehicle, they think that the problem can be properly addressed through other means, then they have the discretion to make that choice. Additionally, we plan to add a second layer of evaluation on any towing decision by having a supervisor approve that to tow that vehicle and impound it. So that supervisor would be informed of the factors at play, you know, if this is a fifth reckless driving citation for the driver, or if this, you know, a first situation and the driver maybe needs some more education. So that supervisor would have the option to approve or deny that request by the officer, and that gives that second layer of evaluation, like I mentioned. Thank you.
In just a moment, Councilman Duden.
I've got a question about the first offense, second offense, that sort of thing. Is that tied to the vehicle, or is it tied to the driver? Because what if he goes home, gets a different vehicle, does the same thing with a different vehicle?
I think that it's, the intention is for it to be tied to the driver. So when the driver, if the, you know, say dad has two cars and it's a son driving, first car gets towed and impounded, the owner is informed, and then son is driving a second different car, then that would apply to that situation.
What if it's like a year later?
It's all within 12 months.
12 months, okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other counselors? Councilman Bowers?
I just had one other question. If someone gets their car impounded and they feel like that it was not the correct legal action, like, is there a process for them to contest that? And then who's responsible for, can you walk me through that process a little bit?
Sure. As I mentioned, towing vehicles is not new to us. Under DUS situations, somebody with a suspended license, their vehicle can be towed and held for 10 days as well. So it's very similar to these circumstances. If there is some type of extenuating circumstance, some hardship, an issue where it's causing them extreme inconvenience and they need it, whether it's for work or childcare, whatever it might be, there are mechanisms where they can work through the tow yard to contact the supervisor within the Police Department and get approval for an early release on the vehicle. So that's happened, I mean, it's not frequent, it's not, you know, daily, but it has happened under the DUS or policy in certain circumstances, and we would have a similar situation under the disorderly vehicle policy.
Thanks. I think with this, we'll take a moment and listen to other folks who've come today for the hearing, and just stick around, because we may have more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right. We're going to just have the public hearing now. We're asked, it doesn't matter if you're in support or opposition, we'll just blend that, go back and forth, so there's no particular order. So if anyone here would like to speak on this item, either in support or opposition, please come forward now. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Mike Krakemire. I live at 3743 Woods Avenue. I'm the president of Witherby Neighborhood Association. Witherby Neighborhood runs from 33rd Street on the west to 56th Street on the east, O Street to Randolph Street define the north and south borders. As president, I am testifying as a representative of the Witherby Board of Directors and the entire neighborhood in supporting the passage of the dangerous driving ordinance. As president, I know that the problem of excessive speed and loud noise along O Street is a major concern for the entire neighborhood due to the number of times it is discussed at our monthly meetings, especially during the spring and the summer. As a 30-year resident of living three blocks south of the O Street racetrack between Wayuka and Calvary Cemeteries, I personally support these new rules to reduce the speed and the noise. I look forward to quieter summer evenings in my backyard. I'd like to thank Lieutenant Rumschuck for his work crafting the ordinance and everyone else that worked on this. I'd also like to thank the entire LPD force for working to make the streets of Lincoln safer. This ordinance seems to be another way to help them do that for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, members of the city council. My name is Spike Eickel. My address is 635 South 14th Street, Suite 320. I'm here on behalf of the ACLU of Nebraska. I did email the city council members last week addressing our concerns. We are not opposed to, we are opposed to a portion of the proposed ordinance. We're not opposed to the definition of racing or racetrack or those broadens of those criminal offenses. The concerns that we have is the penalty provision for impoundment of a vehicle. Despite the assertions in the city ordinance and despite the assertions for the proponent testimony that you heard earlier, the impoundment provision of this ordinance is a punishment. It's like a fine. It's like jail. It's only imposed for someone who is found to have violated one of these conditions. That's significant because the way that this ordinance proposal is envisioned is that it is going to be a decision that the officer makes on the scene. Officers do have discretion whether to issue a citation or not. That's common, that happens in state law, city ordinance, other areas of law. Officers do not have the power to have the discretion to impose a punishment, and that's the argument that you're asked to accept. In other words, officers make the decision to cite or not cite somebody and decide what they're going to cite them for. They don't decide what the jail term's going to be. They don't decide what the fine's going to be. Even though the city ordinance asserts that the impoundment and tow is not a penalty, it is. It's only triggered if someone is cited for a criminal act. It's not like driving under suspension because the tow authority in that context is because the person who's driving under suspension does not have the legal authority to drive at all. The vehicle's got to get moved somewhere, and that's the authority that happens there. The cities can tow other vehicles that are blocking traffic or that are in violation of a snow emergency because the person that's doing that, committing that civil ordinance violation, is not committing a crime. They're not going to have to go to court after the fact. They just have to go get their car out of impound. So the problem that we have is that this allows this punishment to be imposed before someone even goes to court, before someone's even found guilty of anything. The other problem that we have with the impoundment provision is it does not necessarily follow the offender. The duty to get the car out of impound is the registered owner, not only for the first offense but for the second offense that has the mandatory 10 days. And that is punitive. If we're going to have a punishment for impoundment, it ought to happen and be imposed with the person who actually committed the crime itself, not the registered owner of the vehicle. And you are going to have situations where you're going to have parents who are the registered owner of the vehicle, or a friend's going to be, or a girlfriend is going to be, something like that. And this only allows for the person who's the registered owner to get that vehicle back and for a second offense. And presumably, it doesn't even have to be a second offense for racing. It can be willful reckless driving. If you look at page six of the proposed ordinance, there's a whole series of different crimes that are listed. That means that the owner of the vehicle doesn't have that vehicle for 10 days. I didn't hear the actual math, or I heard the numbers, but I couldn't do the math. These things are fairly significant and fairly cost prohibitive. If the city wants to somehow send a message and impose a financial cost on violators, I would respect, or we would respectfully suggest, you just have something to do with the fine. The city does have minimum fines with some city ordinances, but this sort of in-the-field decision the officers make to impose this penalty of towing and impounding and storing of a vehicle in some circumstances just flies in the face of our system of being presumed innocent and having the courts sort of impose punishment themselves. I'll answer any questions if you have any, but I think I covered the main points that I outlined in the email that I sent you last week, and hopefully I was clear here today.
Thank you, Mr. Eickel. Anyone have a question? Councilman Brody, Weber, sorry.
Thank you, Chair Washington, and thank you, Mr. Eickel, for coming down. So you spoke a little bit about the imposition of punishment, right? And you distinguish that between the suspension of a license, the, if a driver were to have a DUI or under the influence, or if they were to be, or the vehicle can be removed if they're not committing a crime. Can you elaborate a little bit more on how you distinguish those distinctions? The not committing a crime versus committing a crime, the suspension of a license, and then with the dangerous driving?
Sure. The argument I tried to make, and I maybe didn't make it very clearly, but the city does have some authority to tow vehicles. It has that ability to impound and tow vehicles, and the city can do it for a variety of different ways. The city can do it for health and safety purposes. And that's what this ordinance proposes to assert a violation of this crime is, is health and safety purposes. Respectfully, I think that's just not, I think that's somewhat disingenuous. In other words, if you leave your car parked on the street for weeks and months, animals start living in it, it starts leaking oil. The city has the ability to sort of remove it from the public street for legitimate health and safety purposes. The city doesn't keep it for 10 days. The city doesn't arbitrarily just do that. If a person finds out their car is towed in that situation, they can go get it out of impound and pay the cost of towing and whatever cost it was to store it. But the person's not charged with a crime necessarily after that or certainly before that. That's the city's, what I would argue is their civil function to sort of make sure that some vehicles are not in the way of public safety. If you look at this ordinance, this only applies to someone who is, apparently according to the outline or the PowerPoint, who is cited with a crime. Now, cities can impose crimes, and the state has dictated that for cities, the primary class, the cities can pass ordinances that have up to six months jail or up to a $500 fine. The state has not authorized the cities to impose impoundment as a penalty. And that's significant because if you look on page six, some of these triggering offenses are violations of state law. There's no penalty under those state laws for impoundment. The city would be inconsistent with state law in those regards. So that's a second sort of argument. But if you look at this, I know that the city ordinance asserts and claims that these things are health and safety nuisances, but the practical reality is they follow a criminal citation. And in our system of justice, you're presumed innocent. You just don't get your punishment first and then find out later on whether you're going to have to go to court or not. It doesn't work that way. I hope that was clear, maybe it wasn't.
No, absolutely it was. I'm just digesting it. I don't know if any of my other colleagues have questions.
Councilman Carlson.
I'm not sure my question quite yet, maybe, but you mentioned something, a more equitable language would be an increase in fines. Can you talk about that, or what would that look like?
Well, I can't, I wasn't consulted in the drafting of the ordinance, of course, but I do know that the cities can impose a fine of up to $500. But for some offenses, and I can't think of anything firsthand, maybe disturbing the piece, one of the city ordinances does have a minimum fine of like $150, up to $500. And I think courts at least have to set that minimum fine. I think the city, somebody from city law can speak to that more clearly, or more accurately at least. But if the point of this impoundment is to somehow make someone suffer a financial inconvenience, and that's, I think, ultimately what it is, it ought to, number one, follow the actual offender, not necessarily the person who's happened to be owning that car. And we haven't even talked about rental cars or anything like that. I don't know if that's going to be an issue. And second, it ought to be paid by that person, if that's the point, rather than having the sort of, you know, discretionary tow and haul and have the registered owner make sure they have their title in order and go down there and be sent away. And if there is an exception in 10 days, there's nothing in the ordinance that talks about a good cause exception or daycare, whatever the officer was talking about before. All that hassle that the person who owns that car has to go through is not being felt on the person who is racing on O Street. And we would respectfully suggest that that's what is intended by this ordinance, and it ought to effectuate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Eickel?
Again, kind of like Justin, I don't know if I have the question formatted in my head just yet, but, you know, I'm not, my mind keeps going back to like junk cars, right? Because like junk cars, you know, you can get a misdemeanor for that, your car can get impounded for that, your car can get impounded, I believe, before you're found guilty of the misdemeanor. And so like, when I hear, I'm just trying to like, kind of, because what I'm hearing you say is that like, there is a punishment before anyone's been found guilty of anything, right? But when I think of some of the other ordinances, I'm trying to figure out, is there a difference there? Or, because, I mean, if you have a junk car, it can get impounded even before you're found guilty of a misdemeanor in that. I don't know if you have any response to that or any kind of...
I think the comparison of junk car ordinances, and there's a lot of litigation on that, I admittedly have not researched this in great detail. But in junk car, the city's interest, if you will, and make sure that health and safety is maintained, is greater with junk cars. Because you've got cars that are sitting on blocks in someone's yard where kids can get into and are simply an eyesore for the neighborhood. That is legitimate health and safety. The triggering mechanism here is the officer believes that you committed a crime.
And I think, not to, I don't know, I think maybe philosophically, I don't know if I necessarily agree with like the junk car portion of stuff being like a legitimate threat, you know? You know, when I hear that there's been six deaths in like four years, you know what I mean? I don't know how many deaths we've had because of junk cars, you know? And admittedly, you know, I've had a junk car in my lawn before, you know what I mean? So, and I'm really angry when I get those tickets, but we pay them, or, you know, end up selling the cars. I guess the other thing, and I'm really kind of curious on your philosophical, you know, perspective of this, is shouldn't owners have a responsibility to make sure that the possessions that they have are not causing a danger or a threat to people's safety? You know, and I'm not trying to say this in any sort of like gotcha trick way, but I mean, just as we're talking and having a conversation, right? Shouldn't people, even if it's not them driving it, right? But for someone stealing it, I don't even know if I'm using that phrase correctly, but if someone steals my car, that's different, right? If Justin steals my car and then takes it out and then goes to be Mr. Hot Rod, right? But like, if I leave my keys available to where someone can then take it, or if I let, you know, my mom doesn't drive anymore, but let's say my mom takes my car and, you know, she becomes Mrs. Hot Rod with Justin, you know? Wouldn't I have some sort of obligation to make sure that the people that I give access to my cars, a responsibility to make sure that they're not using my property to create a dangerous situation?
I think so, yes. I think what you said is accurate, that if you have a vehicle and you are voluntarily loaning it off to other people, you should have some responsibility. But the ordinance as written does not capture all circumstances. You can easily imagine a single parent who's already got a couple of out of control kids that she can't keep off O Street at night, going to lose her car for 10 days. You can imagine an abusive, and some people apparently are just fine with that, but our point is that the punishment ought not be imposed on that single parent. You can easily imagine an abusive relationship where the girlfriend's got the car and the abuser just takes it whenever he wants to. That's who's going to have to pay those costs. So I understand your argument, the point you're trying to make, but the practical reality, these things hit some groups of people differently and harder.
Councilman Duden, Councilman Weber.
Sir, a couple of times, you indicated a couple of things. When vehicles get towed because they're parked on a emergency snow route or something like that, there's also a ticket that goes with it along with the tow. And you said it was just the tow, so there's more than that. You also talked a little bit about, you know, the practicality, you used that word a couple of times, and I'll tell you, this has been a problem for 50, 60 years on O Street. This isn't anything new. And I've worked a fatality at 53rd and O Street, umpteen years ago. Kid turned in front of a car, elderly woman T-boned it, passenger lost his right arm. This is what they're trying to impact here. And frankly, I think this tow is nothing more than an inconvenience. It's going to be an inconvenience for the owners, and it's going to be an inconvenience for the people that need that car. And frankly, if that saves lives, it's worth it. So I think some of the stuff that you're bringing up here today is just counterproductive, and it's too protective of these people that are driving dangerously on O Street. And because of that, I'm going to support this.
Councilman Weber.
So I do just want to take a point of personal privilege and say that I appreciate, Mr. Eickel, you coming down here and having this conversation, because I think that's how we develop good policy, right? Having informed conversations, both those from the opposition, those in support, and figuring out really what is the best policy for the folks of Lincoln. So I just want to real quickly say that, I want to get back to your contention about the impoundment as a criminal penalty, right? So to clarify, the assertion is that a vehicle cannot be, or a vehicle cannot be impounded for health and safety purposes if it is associated with a criminal citation? Is that correct?
Not necessarily, because what Councilman Duden mentioned is accurate, that sometimes in those tow situations, for leaving a vehicle parked in the street or blocking an intersection, or even for driving under suspension, you're going to have a citation with driving under suspension along with the tow. I think the 10-day arbitrary impoundment is clearly punitive.
Okay.
Because the point of it is just to get it off the street, and by the way, you committed a crime, why are you using it? So we're going to give you a citation for this, but we need to do something with this vehicle. The 10-day sort of detention period, in our opinion, is punishment.
So the issue isn't so much the detention with the first offense as much as it is with the second offense?
I think it still is arguably the first offense, but I think most clearly it is in the second.
Okay. And that's helpful for me to understand. And then, related to Councilman Bowers' hypothetical situation with Councilman Carlson and Mrs. Bowers being hot rods, you know, he mentions an example of voluntarily loaning, right? And how, in that example, a person would know that their car is being used, and I think you share some really thoughtful examples of what could happen in that situation. I just wonder if after a person, after the first offense, right, is notified that a second offense is possible, and these are the likely outcomes if that second offense is to occur, if that would be, if that owner of that vehicle then does have a responsibility more so than they would in the first situation to be aware of how their vehicle is being used?
I mean, it might be. I don't know that a registered owner that sort of gets their car out the first time is going to know where a second offense is. I don't know that they're going to know that. I mean, not a lot of people all the time pay attention to what we're talking about here, right?
Fair.
So that's the response I have of that, but I think I understand the point you're trying to make.
Thank you. And again, thank you so much for coming down and answering these questions.
All right. Thank you very much.
I got one more thing.
Okay.
One more thing. Before you leave, I don't know if you're aware, but Nebraska revised statute 60-4110 allows an officer to declare a vehicle a public nuisance, tow the vehicle and impound it the vehicle for 10 days. So even driving on a suspended license, and it doesn't matter whose vehicle you're driving, it could be your vehicle or someone else's. So again, this ordinance isn't going to be that much different than state law.
Thank you for coming forward, and we'll hear from other folks. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify on this item, either in support or in opposition? Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Charlie Ahern. I live at 6517 Darlington Court, which is very close to Taylor Park. So we get the full benefit of the racing noises, starting on a holiday weekend, it starts Thursday and goes through Monday, all night. We have people racing at 3:00 in the morning and waking us up. And so that's part of the story. And just to introduce myself a little more, I used to be a course marshal at racetracks in Northern California. So if you've ever heard of Laguna Seca or Sears Point, I worked as a race marshal there. And I think this is a safety issue. There are six people dying? That's not right. And so I think whatever you can do, and I think this is a good start, whatever you can do to reduce the danger on O Street is a good move. And as far as the impoundment issue, if police officer stops someone doing 100 miles an hour on O Street, put them in jail, put a boot on the car, I don't care what you call it, but that person should not be able to start the engine of that car and drive away. So whatever you can do to protect people, I would appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ahern. Anyone else? Come on. We have two microphones, so if you want to come closer, then we can... We have two microphones, so if you wanna come closer, then we can. All right.
I can wait for you. Oh, you're fine, you're fine. My name is Suzanne Ahern.
The microphones are to your right or left?
And I live same, Darlington Court, which is over by St. Elizabeth's. And again, I want you to know how noisy it is. Goes on and on for hours, and we know that there's people also racing at Cole's parking lot up on 84th and O Street, and we do hear that as well. We hear screeching, I mean, it's so ridiculous and so frustrating for us in the neighborhood. And I keep wondering how the city can allow these cars and motorcycles to continue to do all this racing. It doesn't seem to me that anything has changed. And we've been living there since 19, oh, excuse me, 2018. And if anything, I think that, you know, summer, that's the worst month of all, but they continue. Fall, winter, you name it, they're out there, they really are. And I don't understand why they're allowed to use O Street as a racetrack for entertainment. I once asked a friend, because we were fairly new to Lincoln in 2018, and she said, "Well, my gosh, my dad has been doing that." And she goes, "That's like 30, 40 years ago." And this, I just, it doesn't make sense that if, if this is supposed to be, you know, a fabulous city, I agree, in a lot of ways it is, but this is a danger to people like me. And I go to my volunteer job on Sunday nights, late in the afternoon, and I get out late there, and I will tell you that it is at 25th and O Street. And I hate to tell you this, this is just gonna be another factor involved, but the noise is so horrendous as the night goes on, that the animals in this shelter exhibit signs of high stress from hearing the screeching, and it's horrible. And I think another thing that I don't understand, and I'm just trying to throw all these pieces together so that you'll understand maybe something that you're not aware of, these parking lots of businesses along O Street fill up in the summer with people in lawn chairs, and they bring out their coolers, and they, it's very loud with them yelling and the car noise. And it doesn't seem like these people are, you know, given any type of a citation for that. I think that they should be, and I, I can't see why they can block businesses for people that wanna go into these restaurants and stores. One more incident, and then I will give this lady a chance to get up here and speak. One, and this has happened a few times, I was at a light on O Street at 48th, at a light, stopped, and a car came up next to me and he kept laying on the horn, I just ignored him, looked straight ahead. Kid jumped out of the passenger window, ran around, started beating on my car window and was screaming profanity and so forth, because he said I was delaying his action on O. And he said, "If you're gonna move slow, get on the side street." And so this is another incident of behavior, maybe you haven't heard about this, but this happens. And I've had guys come just racing up behind me and laying on the horns and flashing lights, and they want me to go, you know, as fast as I can so they can do their weaving in and out of car traffic. And again, that's something that, I think people like this should be ticketed. All these other offenses we're talking about should be as well. So thank you for hearing me out, I've been waiting a long time to air my grievances, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ahern.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Members of the City Council, my name is Kristy Ager, I'm the Lancaster County Public Defender. I have never had the pleasure of talking to you guys before, so this is interesting watching what everything's going on. My work address is 633 South 9th Street, and my home address is 3245 South 28th Street here in Lincoln. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposal, not because I'm in favor of folks racing down O Street, or any street for that matter, but because of the negative collateral consequences that would arise from the vehicle impoundment, especially for our clients and their families. These are people who are already living paycheck to paycheck, and impounding their only mode of transportation makes life even more difficult. Lots of people don't have the privilege that you all might have of having two cars. My family has two cars. Couple weeks ago, one of our vehicles pooped out, and so we had to carefully drive it to the tow guy, to the guy to fix it, and we were happy to get it there, but it was there for a week, and it was inconvenient to have one vehicle, but lots of people live like that all the time. So I urge you to think about those kinds of people when you are deciding what to do with this proposal. Say for example that a young person is allowed to use the family car, they come home from school, and they are allowed to use the car to go to their work. They make a bad decision, and they decide to race or drive recklessly, and recklessly can be running a red light, or turning on a yellow when it's too yellow. Running, any, reckless driving is a pretty vague statute, so I'd ask you to look at that as well. So they make a bad decision, they drive recklessly, they're pulled over, and the car is impounded. It would also be searched, property, any property that's seized would be affected then, and that also affects people's Fourth Amendment constitutional rights, and increases the likelihood of hearings on motions to suppress at court hearings, then that affects the court system as well. Let's go back to the family that's been impounded. My talk here today is to have you think about the people who only have one car in their vehicle is the only thing. So they may not have good credit, they may not have money in their bank account or cash to cover the towing fee, which is more than I had heard. I thought it was $57, but I didn't know about the $50 administration fee, so that even hikes up the price more. So they might not have money right away, so even if you could say it gets out that first day, they may not have money that first day. So, or cash to cover any of those fees. They may not, unlike you, be able to get a vehicle out and impound right away, and that means mom and dad can't use the vehicle to get to work, they can't get their kids to school or daycare, or to counseling, or treatment, or even get groceries. We all rely on our vehicles maybe too much, and our bus system doesn't accommodate people who work second and third shifts for all of their to and from. Uber and Lyft and the like are too expensive. If people can't get to work, they lose their jobs, and the cycle of poverty just keeps going, and it increases, making life harder and harder for this family and for other families. So please consider those consequences when deciding what to do. There are already a number of possible municipal ordinance violations to handle racing situations. There's a speed contest municipal ordinance, the careless, reckless, negligent driving, and there's also willful reckless. Those also include if you're convicted, points off your license, and we already talked about if your license is suspended or revoked, then when you're driving, you're definitely going to get into trouble. The court can also impose probation on people as a sentence with further rules and consequences. There are already statutes and LPD orders to define when a vehicle can be towed, or when it can be impounded, and those are typically, typically for driving on a suspended license. I think you referred to 64,110? My, I brought that with me, because I had looked it up just before, and my reading of that is looking at DUI cases, refusal to submit to a protest, and then underage DUI cases. But I didn't look at all the statute numbers that are referenced there, but I think the intent of that, to impound the vehicles where they may impound, is for DUIs, drunk driving, and driving under suspended license. That's how I read that statute. Maybe the officer discretion creates even further difficulties for the City Council. I have seen a lot of implicit bias when I see officers treating people of color on the streets, and I have seen people of color have higher bonds, I have seen people of color get arrested and put in jail when other people are given a citation. So I worry that this could happen as a result of this as well. So I ask you to consider that. Maybe a greater police presence is needed on the times and places when this racing is taking place. I heard people talk who live close to this, who say it happens at this time, or it happens during these times or at these places. I mean, there are a lot of police officers in our society, and I would think that they could go there and take care of it. Also, I'm sorry, I'm almost out of time, the Alive at 25 class is a good class for kids to take, and that is something to do, to encourage that for this kind of bad driving behavior for young kids. Perhaps Community Corrections could come up with some programs too. There you go.
Yeah, all right. Any questions? I will start with Councilman Beckus, then Councilman Bowers.
Thank you, Chair Washington, thank you for coming down today, I appreciate it. As a fellow elected official and someone that works in criminal cases every day, what would your practical solution be for curbing dangerous driving in the city?
Well, I think the police presence is a big thing. I also think, and I forgot to mention it, that people, we need to take responsibility, like that lady who just talked. If we are seeing that happen, we have a duty to call the police. You know what I do? I quick turn off of O Street and get the heck out of the way. That's not how I should act. I should probably call the police and say, "Here, here's what I'm seeing. These people are endangering other people." So I think we all need to do more, the people who live in this area, you know, maybe get a community organization together to sit there and watch people and take down license plates, and document what kind of bad driving that they're seeing. And I feel bad that I didn't, you know, I should do something, but we don't. We just wanna get away, we wanna protect ourselves. So increased police presence, you know, to validly see and validly stop and investigate it, and have it on body cams, have it on the cruisers as they watch. I think the helicopter has helped.
Yep.
You know, so...
Thank you for that, I appreciate it. Do you have a, perhaps a suggestion from someone, someone who has been ticketed, who has then been released by police, who then continues to drive around the city? Or, you know, even for example, if we were to have neighborhood advocates write down license plate numbers, a next step for that?
Tell me, reword that again, I need to better understand what you're asking.
Sure.
Yeah.
So would you have any suggestions for a dangerous driver who, let's say, has been ticketed and then is currently released by police with their vehicle in their possession, in their possession, which occurs today? Or you had mentioned in your testimony here just now, perhaps neighborhood advocates should be writing down license plate numbers. I didn't know, in those two circumstances, what the next steps that you would feel would be in order to curb dangerous driving?
For the second example, I think, you know, like me, and all of us, we have a duty to call the police if we see something bad, we just wanna close our eyes, but the next steps can be taken. If you see something, get your phone out, record it, you know? We can have that kind of control. I don't know if it's the same kids driving back and forth or not, the people who live there might, so they have more insight into that than I do. The first thing is, if the court sees someone coming back in front of them, they are going to punish them more. Frankly, a first offense reckless driving is probably gonna get somebody a ticket, and they're gonna get a fine.
Sure.
Okay? They've got time to pay the fine, or they can do community service if they can't pay it. The second time they come in front of the court, there's gonna be higher penalties. Like I was saying, my encouragement would be, teach people the first time to drive properly. You get cited, you take a class, you take the Alive at 25. Maybe that should be mandated, I don't know. But, you know, that's a, I think it only costs a hundred dollars, but it's four hours, and it's making a young person sit there and look at the incidents of traffic, you know, traffic accidents, and here's what can happen as a result of your driving. Kids' brains aren't really very fully developed, and if they're the ones going down O Street, I think we need to teach them, and we need to better train them. And I'm not sure that taking away the car is really going to do that, so...
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you all.
First, I wanna say, I appreciate your testimony, I also appreciate Spike's public comment, because, you know, the work that you two do ensure that, ensures that there's an appropriate, you know, consequence that happens, right? So we might have people say, "Just lock everyone up who does anything illegal," right? And that's just not realistic, and it's not good policy just to lock everyone up forever. So, you know, I do wanna say that I appreciate you and Spike working to try to make sure that there's an appropriate level of response to threats to our community, right? But I'm gonna make a statement, and I'd like, I would ask you to respond to it, just 'cause I'm kinda curious to hear what your response would be. You know, there's been additional police presence, there's been a helicopter, there's been multiple community organizations that have reached out, and that have said that the tools that they currently have, that the city has, is not meeting the need of our community. If there are six fatalities and 800 accidents that result in an injury over the past four years, then the tools that are there now are not enough. And so I'm hearing what you say about the additional, you know, financial constraints to the parents that don't lock their keys up in a lock safe, or aren't able to keep their keys away from their kids, that that creates a financial, you know, barrier for them. But I can't get over the barrier of the accidents that result in injury, or the fatalities that happen, and that seems like that that is a greater barrier that a family would face. And so I just, I, I, I'm seeing this as kind of a scale, right? I hear what you're saying about the additional financial barriers for folks, but then I also see the fatalities and the crash accidents, right? And that creates a hell of a barrier for families also, right? And so I'm just kinda, if you could just kind of respond to that, I would kind of, I would appreciate your, your comments on that.
Well, I think we need to do a better job as a society, teaching kids about responsibility, and teaching them about, here's the consequences of our actions, but kids do stupid things, you know? That's why, I mean, I'm a big fan of encouraging education first. I wasn't gonna say this before, but now I'm going to, because you asked me. I have watched cruiser videos and body cams where there are seven police officers who go to a trespassing incident, or my client takes something from Walgreens, and there's five officers standing around on the street, talking to that one person who shoplifted the vodka, or whatever. So I think maybe the Police Department and the Sheriff's Department, you know, I mean, I think law enforcement needs to put the resources where they really need to be. I think there's over patrolling of areas in our town that include people of color, and maybe some of those resources ought to be put on O Street, or on the streets where people are doing all this speeding, because I think it's a, seems to me, the testimony today is that it's a fairly predictable area, pretty predictable time, and I think that adequate patrolling could have a large impact on it. I mean, you've gotta catch people in the act. If they're just speeding and speeding and creating lots of reckless behavior, but they never get caught, what good does that do? That's even more risk. So if you don't have police there to, to catch people, then people are gonna get killed.
And I guess, you know, what I'm, what...
Okay, one more question, and then we'll move.
I think I got two more questions, so let me do my two more questions. You know, I'm hearing what you say of like, if it was as simple as just putting more officers on O Street, I think it would have happened, right? There has been additional police presence there, there's been helicopters there, there's been additional funds that have gone to put in additional patrolling to happen there. And I think to just kind of imply that it's just this willfulness of officers to just ignore this area, I don't know if I believe that or buy that, because when we have constituents that are reaching out to us, I'm bothering Hubca, saying, "Hubca, I'm getting like 50 calls again from folks that are frustrated about us over there." Even when my mom used to work over on CVS and 70th Street, right? I mean, she worked the night shift, and so that was of course a priority for me. So I think the implication that I'm hearing is that it's just this willful desire from LPD, because they just don't want to patrol that area. And I would like to allow you to respond to that, and not just end it on that.
I don't think it's willful. I just think that the resources... I just think that the resources could perhaps better be focused in that area.
And then the last thing that I'll say is, you know, the, we kept, kept hearing like, you know, kids' brains aren't fully developed or, you know, kids aren't the ones that are doing this. And I just want to be like super mindful that like, it's not just kids, right? Like there's adults, there's people my age, there's people older, it's not just, you know, youth. And not all young people are the ones that are responsible for this. And so I just want to make sure that we're not specifically, you know, picking out a specific group of age range here.
No, the education, the Alive at 25 is for ages 15 to 24. So it's kind of a large gap of, you know, age range for people that can benefit from it. But you're right, people of all ages I have seen out there, yeah.
Councilman Cho.
Thank you Madam Chair, Ms. Eggers, thanks for coming forward. I want to agree with you. First I want to thank you, Spike, I want to thank you too. You gave us, gave me something to think about. One of the things you said though, I want to fixate on, education. I tell a long story about my dad telling me I know how to operate a vehicle, but I don't know how to drive. Those are different things.
Right.
Would you agree that this public hearing and this conversation is the start of an education campaign?
I agree with you that education is always important. And I'd like to see, you know, more people learning, more people engaged in our community, just better education about what the rules are. Because, you know, who knows about this hearing? Danny at my office had to tell me about this ordinance because I don't always look at the paper. And so I think we all need to be better. We all get lackadaisical and, yeah, we do need to engage in the here and now. And I appreciate everyone who's come here today. It's, it's very, very interesting.
That was on my question, was would you agree that we, the city, are trying to explain and educate? I remember many years ago, we had a conversation similar to this and my friend John Kemp, who was on the council then, said, you're trying to do behavior modification, aren't you? And I kind of said, yeah, we are, we're trying to change the behavior of a few people at the request of other residents of our community. We're trying to respond to people. Yeah, okay. This is part of the education, that's my real question. And you'd say, thank you, thank you Madam Chair.
All right. Councilman Duden.
Just a little, just a little follow-up. I appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you.
I've been friends with public defenders when I was in law enforcement, going back to Judge Foster, because he came from the public defender's office, so. But there's no way that you can make a law totally fair because you're going to have your indigent violators and you're going to have the people with more money, but you still have to have the law. And would you, would you admit that the purpose of a law or a rule is to generate voluntary compliance?
I suppose that's the goal, but it always isn't the outcome. I mean, think about murder cases.
Well, think about, think about it this way. The speed limit on O Street there is 40 miles an hour. Most people drive 40 miles an hour because we trust the traffic engineer that designed that roadway and the people that laid the concrete, all that sort of stuff goes into assessing what the speed limit should be for that particular area based on the width of the traffic lanes and what have you. And most people do go to that speed. And so those are the good drivers and they're out there to get from A to B. And then you have a few out there that disregard other people's safety and drive recklessly. And unfortunately, those are the ones that are causing the problems and have it causing the problems. And I can hear this, there's no way I could hold my phone up at 58th and South Street and be able to call in on something like that, because I can hear them from there. And that's, that's 20 blocks away from O Street. So it's a, it's been a problem and I don't know how people that live close to O Street, I don't know how they've been able to put up with it. It's, it's been a tremendous problem. And the more tools that law enforcement has, I think is the better. And yeah, it's going to be an inconvenience for a few. It's going to be a learning thing for a few. But at the same time, I think once people learn, they'll maybe respect those speed limit signs and, and the safety of the other drivers that are present as well, so. But I thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome and good afternoon.
I'm Danielle Savington, the Danny that got Ms. Eggers' attention. I've been an attorney here in Lincoln, Lancaster County, for about 15 years in the juvenile and criminal system. Just this January, I moved my family here from Omaha. We've lived in Omaha for all this time, well, just south of Omaha and Sarbee. And Omaha used to have a pretty big drag racing problem. Used to do it a lot up and down Dodge Street. And one of the ways that they dealt with it was they made a rule, if a cop saw you doing the same stretch twice on that night, pull you over, you'd get cited. And that was a way that the officers dealt with things and identified problem people. I think that's a good idea. Obviously, six deaths is scary, it's troublesome. In a small, big city like Lincoln is, we don't like hearing that. And a lot of those were young people who died. But this doesn't just deal with drag racing up and down O Street, which admittedly is a problem. And I think Ms. Egger is accurate in stating that we have a lot of law enforcement in this city and when they set their minds to addressing a problem, a lot happens. Look at how many DUI citations happened over state volleyball or state basketball weekend because we focused and we paid attention to the narrow area where we knew that there would be a lot of that kind of behavior. So I think that, I think our law enforcement is situated in a way that they can have an effect. A lot of talk has been tonight or today about low income, our, our clients, low income families and how this will impact them. But my background is in juvenile court. And when I read that article about this in the paper, my mind immediately spun to how this would impact my juvenile court families. And all I could think about is the mom who works at Kawasaki, second shift, and when she gets off work, she goes to work at McDonald's for that shift. An impound of her vehicle is going to cost her both of those jobs. If she's in the juvenile court and she is ordered to participate in family therapy and visitation, she's not going to be able to make it to those family visits and that visitation, which is going to impact her reunification plan. That's going to cause trauma to her children, it's going to cause delays in that case, and it could ultimately negatively impact everything permanently for that entire family. And it doesn't even have to stem from this person having a kid who's drag racing. I have three kids that were all teenagers at one point in time and thankfully, none of them are here to get mad at me for saying this, but they were all stone stupid. Every last one of them was stone stupid as they made their way through their teen years. And I never once said, here guys, take the keys to my car, go do stupid stuff, please, have fun. But I did say, you can borrow my car to drive to work. And I did let them do that because we didn't have enough money for three cars. I still don't have enough money for three cars and I'm a well-paid county employee. If my kid got pulled over for running a red light and decided to be stone stupid to the officer and run his mouth and get bratty, yep, that red light ticket becomes a reckless ticket. And that reckless ticket could become an impound if he keeps running his mouth. Willful reckless carries with it, it's an M3 in this city. I work in front of our city judges five days a week. They have the ability to fine a person $500. They have an ability to put you in jail, 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 for three months. On a second offense reckless, they could put you in jail for six months, they can fine you $500 and they can take your license for months, two years. They can impound your vehicle on a second willful. The tools are already there. So I think this change takes a meat cleaver to a paring knife situation. We don't need to impound vehicles for 10 days. We don't need to impound them for one day. There was discussion about punishing the driver, but the car is the one that's getting stopped. So like I said, I got three teenagers. I might have my oldest get in trouble for driving poorly and I might ground him and say, well, now your brother's got to drive you to work. And then bless his heart, he does something stupid. But that's still my car that's now been impacted twice. And again, I am not in any way minimizing the severity of the drag racing that's happening on O Street. It's a problem, it needs a solution. I talked with other private attorneys and I talked with some other agencies. I know legal aid chimed in that, that some of their clients would be negatively impacted by this. I think that it would be a really phenomenal opportunity to explore a diversion program. The Nebraska Safety Council has programs in addition to the Alive at 25, but they have programs that are available too and that aren't age restricted. And I think that if Lincoln seriously wants to address this problem and it wants to teach people and it wants to make a point, I think the solution isn't harming parents, it isn't setting families back. The solution is taking hold of the actual offenders, which we know we can get to because we have the officers capable of doing it. Take the actual offenders and push them into those, funnel them into education programs. Create a diversion program that's city-specific, traffic-specific. This is how we need you to behave on our roads. Because then we won't have people who are our age and driving foolishly up and down O Street because for some reason we think at 35, 45, 50, we should be doing that. But there's other options other than, I think, really destabilizing households. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Becke.
Thank you, thank you for coming down today and testifying, I appreciate it. Would it be a better choice to put people in jail?
I don't think so. Especially, I think, I mean, if we're talking about 16 and 17-year-olds that are, you know, just making dumb decisions, I think that exposes them to a lot of...
That is a tool that we do have currently.
Right, and I, I think when you're talking about second, third, fourth offenders and adults that are doing this, I think maybe that's an option to explore. But, but I'm just saying that, you know, if you have somebody that's really just putting the public at risk, I mean, I think somebody said, driving 100 miles an hour up O Street, there's a way to stop that person from turning the ignition and turning the car back on at the end of a traffic citation. And so, no, I would never want to see anybody be placed into custody. I'm just saying, that can happen at the back end of things after a conviction. But all of that happens after somebody has opportunities to ask for probation, to pay fines, to... And there's a city attorney who, I think the whole city attorney's office takes this very seriously. But there's one who, man, when she gets a hold of a young person who's driving recklessly, if they want any kind of deal from her, she puts them through their paces. She will have them handwrite the motor vehicle homicide statute, handwrite it so they know that they really took it in. And she'll have them write a letter or a little essay that explains what they learned from it. All of that just to get a fine reduced. And I've, I've heard from my clients that that impacted them, they didn't think about it. And, or they've had to take the mad victim impact class. And I don't know if you've ever seen that or taken it, but it's rough. It's a hard class to watch. You, you hear from people that have actually directly suffered losses from drunk driving and it's impactful. And I think that that even has a bigger impact. I mean, like I said, my kids are stupid and they don't want to see me get angry. But at the end of the day, if mom gets angry, that's just mom angry. But if you make them sit through a class, you make them do some work themselves, that's going to cause some real change.
Okay. And then I just wanted to make note, not necessarily a question. A few folks have been testifying that, and I think Councilman Bowers referenced this as well. We hear these complaints, it's not just O Street oriented, but 84th Street, 27th Street, Nebraska Parkway. Citywide. Just wanted to make that note. Thank you Chair Washington, I appreciate it.
All right. Councilman Bowers.
Yeah, I just, you know, I want to reference something that Hubco mentioned earlier and something that you said, you know, about when officers put their mind to it and I just... Hubco, I believe, said earlier that he was on the scene for three of those fatalities. For three of those people that lost their lives, he was the one that responded. This is not just LPD being unwilling to address an issue or they just need to think or put their mind to it harder. I can think of no one more that would want to see this be resolved in a way that saves lives and protects the community. I just, that was on my heart and I just felt like I had to say it.
No, and I, I don't disagree. I, I would state to that though, I think that it's, for me, the, the problem isn't that someone faces a punishment for doing a dumb thing or a bad thing. We all agree that there is punishment for doing bad things. My issue or my concern is who are we punishing? And are we punishing them before they even have an opportunity to be? I mean, I don't just walk into the room and start screaming at my kids when I see that all the Oreos are gone. I got to figure out who's got the chocolate crumbs around their face before I start grounding people and screaming how I'm never going to buy Oreos again. And obviously, that's a silly example, but if there, we're taking away a major facet of family, I mean, you can't navigate Lincoln without your car. And I think about other dangerous things that children and youths can have access to that parents should be regulating, right? Notably guns, right? We have an obligation to keep kids safe from those too, right? But when there's an issue of something like that, we don't take the gun away before we even figure out how did somebody get a hold of it or what happened. There's inquiries that are made, there's decisions that are made, there's a whole process. And asking an officer on the ground to decide to impound a vehicle that can then cause hardship and, and difficulty and ultimately indignancy for a family on the back of what one person who may not even own the item does, just seems excessive. And I think that, I think that officers, I think they make a difference on O Street all the time with, with their pulling over people. And I think that the DUI checks that they do really set the standard. And the media furor around it, everybody knows, man, you were going to get busted if you drove drunk last weekend, right? Everybody knew that, I feel like we all knew that. Because they told us they were going to do that, right? And then they did it. So I think if we tell them, you're going to get pulled over, we're going to be asking for jail on these, we're going to be asking, you know, for these penalties, maybe that'll cause people to, to do the thinking you're asking them to do.
All right. Councilman Weber, Councilman Duden.
Thank you Chair Washington. I just want to clarify the beginning part of your testimony. You had mentioned being an Omaha resident and what some, what I've heard referred to as an anti-cruising ordinance. And I couldn't tell what, if you were speaking favorably of that ordinance compared to this one or not?
Well, I think that it's, it's a way that they identified where cruising was happening and they identified people who were participating in it as opposed to people who were just minding their business on Dodge Street in those hours. And I just think it's one of those creative thinking ways of looking at a problem that doesn't, you know, impose a harsh penalty right off the bat. Although I think that Omaha did eventually crack down on drag racing and cruising a little bit more seriously. But everybody knew, you didn't hang out on Dodge Street, you were going to get pulled over, you know? And I think that changed the behavior, I mean, I was a child of the 90s, I changed my behavior. I didn't want to get, I didn't want my mom getting that call from the parking lot of the crossroads.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone? Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Duden, I'm so sorry, would you come back?
Sorry about that. You know, you, you talked about this being an inconvenience, but I tell you what's a real inconvenience, is when there is a fatality or when that car is cracked up and that parent doesn't have a car anymore.
Or a child.
Yeah, or a child. And, and I think that's the bottom line issue here, is that they're just trying to save lives. And I think that's the whole purpose of the ordinance, is to get people's attention. And yes, if that's an inconvenience to some families, then they, they should probably take heed on what's going on. I hope this gets a lot of publicity. I hope the news media really pumps it up and we, the parents start talking about it with their children. Because I know Officer, Captain Hubco has been to his share of autopsies. I've been to my share of autopsies. And that's where the unpleasantness are. It's not in picking up the impound vehicle, that sort of thing, that's an inconvenience. But we're trying, they're trying to save lives here and I think that's the whole purpose of the ordinance.
Well, and I would hope that that's why we're all here, is that we all acknowledge it's a problem. We all want that to happen, nobody likes, especially dead teenagers. But I think that, that there's, there's ways we can do this that don't result in me losing my Kawasaki slash McDonald's job because my kid was a bonehead. So hopefully, we can, we can figure out and we can work towards something that, like I said, I really could not say enough for the idea of a traffic diversion because in addition to increased police presence, I think when you get a hold of these teenagers and you make them sit and you make them learn something, you make them really pay attention to something, then you're really doing something. then you're really doing something. Because, you know, I can be mad all day long, my kids are just going to let it roll right off their backs and they're not going to hear me, but when an officer pulls them over, when a judge issues a ticket, when a course forces them to attend and show that they participated, that starts to have an impact because that's bigger than just angry mom.
Thank you very much. All right. Are there other folks who'd like to come forward? Okay, you can see a couple. Ma'am, please come on down.
Hi, I'm Bruce Santhorst, and I have emailed you guys and I appreciate your responses so rapidly. And I live on 3320 N Street. N as in O-N. I'm on ground zero. And we lived there for 40 years. And it's gotten worse in the last 10 years at least. It's really, it never used to be this bad. And a lot of it is the sound. We can no longer sit on our patio and have a conversation. We sit in our family room and when the subwoofers go, the, you know, the pictures rattle on the wall. So, anyway, we live with it. And I was 16 once. I drove a car. I drove it fast. I understand. But I also understand that the safety, we use O Street every day. And the safety is not just, I mean, it is very real. And when people are flying by me, I'm not really paying attention to who they are, what their situation is. I'm kind of more concerned about, am I going to be okay? You know, is driving down this street still safe for me to do? And quite honestly, I have to do it. So, you know, that's our transportation, that's how we, you know, that's one of our main streets for, you know, driving. So, anyway, I just want to applaud you guys for this effort because it really needs, something needs to happen. I'm not a lawyer, I don't know the legalese. There's a sound ordinance that looks to me like it's awesome, well-written, it doesn't make any difference because it's not enforced. And we hear this sound all the time, we have motorcycles, we have... I just really want you guys to come up with a solution that can work, you know? And how's it going to be? It's not going to be perfect for everyone because none of us are perfect. And we just, we're trying to live together as a community. I love this city and I love living here. And, you know, I just hope that what your efforts will bear fruit in terms of addressing the issues on O Street. And I just have one question. And again, I don't know the legalese, but in today's technological world, are there opportunities or ways to have signs that show people how fast they're going and take a picture of their license plate and just let them know, "We're aware of this, you driving this way," or something like that? Not, nothing, something just to raise the education, the awareness of people that their driving is being noticed.
Thank you.
Hi.
Good afternoon, welcome.
My name is Sue Dawson and I signed up, but I didn't want to give my address. Can I still talk?
Yes, you may.
We live in the East Campus neighborhood and I have been calling the police in the night, often on, for many years, asking, "Please, go get some tickets. Go get some tickets." You know? And, and I don't know what the solution is, but you know what? If parents know that their car might be impounded, maybe they will hide those keys better. That's, that's what I have to say about that. Please stop that racing, please stop it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon.
I'm Gary Hahn. I live at 6319 Ray Near Court here in Lincoln. Been a resident there for 40 years. We have never had anything like this in our city. I'm here on behalf of our neighborhood. Several are real concerned because of the sound is the biggest factor and the safety on O Street as well. I've been calling in for, it's been at least five years because of the sound situation. And the officers have been just terrific. I had one at my door at 3:30 in the morning. She even called me and said, "Are you going to still be up at 3:30?" And I said, "I can't sleep because of the noise." And she said, "Well, I'm wrapping up. We're shorthanded tonight, so we do need some more people on our police force." She said, "We're shorthanded tonight," and she said, "But I will come over." And she did. She came to the door at 3:30 and said, "I'm going to go over and take care of it." And it was probably about, oh, maybe 10 minutes, everything was turned off and that was it. So she did a great job, but we need to do something with that. It's affecting the health, I think, mine as well as others in the neighborhood. And the safety on O Street, I travel O Street a lot and I did see the, one of the victims before she was killed on that motorcycle, 56th and O Street. And I saw her, I was coming home from church, we had choir practice, or not choir practice, Bible study. And I looked over at her and she's on that cycle and she took off on that thing wide open. Next thing I knew, she was up on the back of it, going in between the traffic and everything. And I said, "Man, somebody's going to get killed." Well, it was a week later when it appeared in the news that she had been killed. So, we have lost several there on O Street because of their driving habits and whatnot. They need to be responsible for the vehicle on which they own. I am, I'll let somebody use my vehicle, but I want to make sure that that's a worthy person that's going to be driving. And I know accidents can happen and it's not your fault. I've never had an accident since I've been driving. I'm 82 years old and I haven't driven, I've driven probably all my life and all over and I've, I have never been in an accident in which I was at fault, which is great, helps you on your insurance too. We also have a problem on A Street. They race and it's kind of open because they'll come from 56th up to 70th or vice versa. What I'm really concerned about there is that we have Pius and we have East High. A lot of those students are walking home down those sidewalks, one of which is behind my home. And I fear one of those cars are going to someday lose control and are going to take out some of the kids walking, you know? So, we need to check that out as well. But the sound factor is the biggest thing, I think, on O Street. And I think the cars need to be silenced in some way. Maybe the exhaust systems need to be redone and maybe we need something on that to help the police and make a requirement. Years ago, we did have, it was through the legislature, and I remember my 56 Chevy, we had exhaust pipes that were a little noisy and we had to take them in and have the exhaust system checked for carbon monoxide as well as sound. And if they didn't pass, we had to make them, we had to get them fixed in order to pass them. And then we had to take that when we go to license the car. And that way, there was no sound. I got rid of the sound situation. I'm not sure we have to take that drastic approach on this one. I like what you're doing right now and starting out and doing this and impounding a vehicle, I think, is essential, quite frankly. Doesn't have to be for a long time, but they just have to know there's circumstances out there. And that's really all I had to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You bet.
Good afternoon. My name's Charlie Schrader. I live at 6327 O Street, apartment 405. I live on O Street. I see and I hear. I don't lose any sleep at night. My wife and I use a sound machine and she uses that for my CPAP noise, so we sleep. But I'm really here on a number of aspects of it, as we say. It is, O Street is the primary issue, but we know other streets because I spent 20 years as a Startran bus operator and supervisor. And it's not just at night. It's at eight, the morning. It's at 2:00 in the afternoon. I've had motorcycles, two-wheelies by me on 27th Street while I'm driving a bus. I've seen cars sit in O Street and when the light turns green, you know, it's like, I mean, obviously, I'm not going to race with a bus because I'm going to lose to a tricycle. But anyhow, but it's just, it's all the time. There aren't enough police officers to take care of that issue. So whatever we could do to make it impact, because I hear others talk about low-income families, the damage to the families if there's cars impounded, but I believe if there's not already, there should be some provisions made to, if it, if there is a hardship because of that, yes, maybe you release a vehicle. But the aspect that you cannot get around Lincoln without a car, as a former bus driver, I take offense to that. I just retired in December, so I'm fairly fresh for it, but we don't have the best bus system in the world, but we have a lot better one than we used to have. 7 o'clock, sidewalks rolled up years ago. We now have buses going to 10 o'clock at night during the week. We start at 5 o'clock in the morning. So, you can get around the city pretty good. It's also aspects of, talking about sound, on O Street there, it's kind of like an echo canyon. I live in Eastmont Living is what that address leads to. And that's what the cars, motorcycles and rails say, like the sound of their cars, motorcycles echoing off the concrete. And it really echoes nice. And I don't know what the sound level ordinance is, aspects for loud cars, and the whole thing about loud pipes save lives with motorcycles, it doesn't. Usually distracts you more than anything else, turn to find where is that sound coming from? And so I'm not sure why things are allowed to be as loud as they are. Car stereos, you know, disturbing the peace call. And does that, I don't know what the aspects would be, like, for example, Gateway Mall Parking Lot, first time we got snow, all I hear is cars just spinning their wheels like mad in the parking lot out there. I don't know if I called the police, if anything happened about that because it's private property. I don't know. But anyhow, that's just the thing. And also, it's not, it's all year-round. It can be the coldest day of the year and you have people out there going up and down O Street or 27th, whatever street. Rain, you'd think that'd stop them. It doesn't stop them. It just, it's always there. So that's the thing, it's, we need to do something. And the thing about the age of drivers, most of the nights I see whenever I've been out there, they're not teenagers. They own that car, they cost a lot of money, that they love showing off. So if they're living paycheck to paycheck, that's on them, it's not on us. So, if they're a hardship because they get busted for doing this, I'm not going to feel sorry for them because it's their choice to have that car, what it can do, whether it be sound or speed or whatever. Nothing's more enjoyable than watching cars dart between traffic, motorcycles cutting down the center line. And, you know, you don't, you can't count, I would like to know how many people you might say have almost PTSD driving O Street sometimes. Because I've had fellow residents that have talked about encounters they've had with cars, motorcycles, stuff like that, and it affects them for a while. Didn't even have an accident, it's just what it did to them at that point in time. So, that's all I got to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this bill? Good afternoon.
This is Pat, I'm Pat Scherz and I'm going to say this much. Yes, families have issues with transportation. I think a lot of people need to think about safety all around for, not just, I ride the bus and if it wasn't for the bus, I know that there's other people who think that they can, can't really do without their cars. Well, if I can get to work by taking the bus, yes, I don't work at night, but I work during the day. I walk five blocks to work. I don't see well and I have one good arm. I don't want to hear the people saying, "Oh, I need my car because I can't get anywhere without, without, I can't take the bus." Well, don't give me that excuse. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this?
I'll say something.
Okay.
So my name is Micah Huggenberger. I'm 33 years old. I live at 6741 Colby Street. I have been cruising O Street since I was legally allowed to do so. I still go out every week. I used to be one of your biggest problems. I haven't been for a long, long time.
Thank you.
And why not? Because the system that we have in place, it works. The fines, the point system, everything about it works. I am a testament to that. So why do we have a problem with the kids nowadays? It is progressively getting worse, I can tell you that from being there every week. It's because we haven't made contact with these kids. The police department hasn't. And if they did, they'd give them a citation, they'd have some wise words for those kids, but that contact just isn't being made. And you can say that police presence is ramped up on O Street. It certainly is not. You know, come cruise with me, we'll take three or four laps from downtown to 84th. You will not see one cop some nights, not even one cop. So I don't know if we're down on officers or what the problem is there. But the solution that's being proposed, towing the vehicles from these kids who are breaking the rules, and if we fine them $500 and if we even are threatening, you know, take them to jail too, the last thing that we want to do is make those fines the same as fleeing to avoid arrest. Because if that's the same, why would I stick around when those lights come on behind me? They won't, I'm telling you. I talk to these kids every week. And so, I think the thing, I've sympathized with everybody in this room, very much so. But I think the thing that we're not thinking about is that if we do up the penalties here, O Street is going to turn into something you could have never imagined. It will be high-speed pursuits, no one will have a license plate on their motorcycle or their car. It will be a very polarizing relationship between the police and the cruisers, the racers, I guess, if you will. So what is the solution? We just need a better police presence. That system does work. You know, if we just put a cop at 27th, 33rd, 40th, 48th, 56th, 66th, 70th and 84th, one night, one night, do you know the message that that would send to these kids? They couldn't get away with anything. There is a block, a cop every couple blocks. You do that one time, I think your problem is going to be eliminated. And why is the problem on O Street to begin with, we've never had a place to run our cars, to run our bikes? There is no racetrack, there is no drag strip, okay? So, the concept of the speed contest, right, the friendly competition, that is as old as time. It's not going away, right? People are always going to want to do that. So if we had a place that we could send those kids or tell those kids to go, I mean, we're fining them, we're telling them that they're in the wrong and we're not presenting them with a solution. Okay? So the reason that they come to O Street is just because it's the most central location. It's the same distance for all these kids to come to. It has the worst roads, it has the highest traffic concentration, it's the worst possible spot to cruise. We have nowhere. And that's a center meeting point for everybody to go. So that would be my suggestion. I'm in favor of getting this to end. It's out of control, but I'm against the way that you initially want to go about it here. So, that's all I have.
I really appreciate that. I have one question.
Sure.
Would you open a racetrack?
Would I? I don't have the monetary means to do that. And I don't know who we could go to. Who would?
Speedway or Roseland.
Well, Speedway, there's that. I'm sure there's some people who would be all for that. So that would just be many different conversations that need to have. I think things like that have been presented and they've always been shot down because the noise is a huge thing. You couldn't have that in Lincoln because you will hear it for a mile in every direction. So, I would if I could.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Bowers?
So you mentioned that, like, back in the day, you were one of the folks that was cruising O Street and whatnot.
Sure. Sure.
And that there should be, like, a better police presence. Do you feel like the police presence was better back then?
It was the same. It was the same back then when I was 17 as it is now. So I have not noticed any, you know, there'll be some nights on the cruise night, you know, Memorial Day cruise, yeah, there's cops everywhere, everybody brings their lawn chairs. So sure, there's a heavier presence that night. But as far as boots on the ground, I wouldn't say that I ever see it. I will hear that helicopter in the sky, the bird, but that can get one person. And as it's chasing that one person, the other 400 of us will go out cruising, you know, as they have their eyes tied up, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
My name is Brock DeVorek. I am at 8309 North 58th Street Circle. That is where my business is at. I work on a lot of high-performance cars. I'm one of the people that has been driving high-performance cars. I'm one of the guys that you see out driving around with loud exhaust and roll cage and everything in my car. But what I will say is that it has gotten so bad in the last five years or so that I am no longer able to even cruise my car on O Street because I don't feel safe. And I, I believe that the way that we're trying to go about it is wrong, and I think that what we have is a compounding issue. So when I first started cruising here, say, 15, 20 years ago, there were a lot of guys that were older than me that would, you know, you do something dumb, they're going to put you in your place. They tell you, "Hey, stop doing that, you're going to ruin it for the rest of us." I would organize cruises, say, we'd go sit at Donna Millie's. We'd get permission from the owners of Donna Millie's to sit in the parking lot of Donna Millie's. And, or at least the supervisor at the time. And we would sit there every night, we'd cruise a little bit, but we'd sit there, and we'd sit there peacefully. We wouldn't do anything, we wouldn't want to, we wouldn't rev anything because we had permission, we didn't want to ruin that. LPD came in and told Donna Millie's that we could no longer park there, and that was, that's it. So we started getting trespassing tickets. So then we couldn't sit there anymore. And once some of the more established people in the car scene got kicked out, it started being replaced with younger kids that didn't know necessarily what to do. I'd say consider it like any other hobby. If you want to learn how to golf, you go golfing. No one shows you how to golf, it's going to be just complete chaos on the golf course. That's what we have going on. And you can't, you can't go out and correct anybody because fear of repercussions from police. You can't be out anywhere because of fear of being repercussions from the police. I think that it will continue to compound. As the gentleman before me was saying, it, with a situation like this, if we keep trying to put tickets on the solution side, we are going to start having a lot of people running around without license plates. We are going to have more people running from the cops. The way I look at this is you've got a bucket of trash in the corner and flies everywhere, and you get a bigger fly swatter, is kind of what I feel like this is. I think that there has to be a little bit better solution, but I don't think that this is the actual solution to what's going on. Because there's, there's a lot of stuff where, you know, I'll go out, I'll cruise, I'll be sitting there, I'll get a ticket, but I'll see someone go through an intersection at 120 and not even get bothered because they're so busy writing someone with a loud car a ticket because they're getting complaints about the loud car. Where the actual danger is driving, that's killing people, and I have lost a very good friend of mine on O Street, he was one of those loud car kids too. Someone with a normal car crossed the median and killed him. And nothing really ever came of that, the person that killed him never got caught. But I, I guess I'm kind of starting to talk in a circle on that, but that's, I guess, if you guys have any questions, anything.
Councilman Beckus?
Thank you for coming down and testifying today, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Just the verbiage, I, I want to gather your understanding. When you use the word cruising, what do you mean?
Yeah. So like cruising, the way that we always did it is, you know, you'd sit at one spot, you'd sit there and just talk to your buddies for a while and do whatever, and then you'd go drive up and down O Street once, maybe twice, you'd park, and you were done for the night. But that kind of got broken up by police, so you can't stop in a parking lot anymore. So instead of just sitting in a parking lot quietly, now everyone's driving constantly because if you stop, you get pulled over.
You had mentioned during your testimony, someone going through a light at 120 miles per hour.
Yes.
Is that, in your definition, considered cruising?
No.
So does, does cruising involve speeding higher?
Cruising would not, that would be not considered willful reckless or along the reckless lines or the racing lines. But I think that just because of the way our cars look, we get gone after because of that. So if we're doing, say, 50 in a 45, which you should not do, we're going to get pulled over while someone in a stock Toyota Camry is doing 95 in a 45, because no one's necessarily paying attention to it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Jim Brewer. I live at 600 South 45th Street. The first time I ever come up here and kind of talked about this was with Captain Hubka. They put, I asked him to put a speed limit sign or the board, whatever it is. First car went by there was 52 miles an hour on a 25 mile an hour zone. We have no sidewalks. The kids got to walk in the streets because someone's going to chew them out because they walked on the grass. But I kind of have some respect for these last two gentlemen that spoke.
Can take a moment.
I just get nervous, that's all. Take your time, sir. We're just like your next-door neighbors. Oh, you got a cup of coffee? But the one gentleman spoke about, "Why don't they get us a place to do this?" And I'm thinking, "Why don't you get a place and have the city work with you on it?" You know, you're, you're, you're a grown-up. You're not old like me, but you're a grown-up. Go to the city and say, "I would like to work with you. I would like to have you find us a place together that we can go out and be whatever we want to be." But no, they want you to do it. I want them to do it. Our folks made us do it. And if, and if we're as far as people taking their car out and not being responsible, how can, it's my parents' fault. They gave me the keys, or I took the keys, and they didn't correct me. Now it's your fault because I killed somebody. It's not your fault, it's my fault. It's my parents' fault because they gave me the keys. So what we're doing is powder puffing everything. "Oh, it's okay if you do that, but don't you do this." You know? No, it has to be the same for everybody. You screw up, you go to jail, or you pay a fine, or whatever. But 50 years of this speeding up and down O Street, isn't that long enough? How many lives do we have to lose? Does any of you want to lose family or friends? I don't. So we cannot powder puff it. We got to be tough and say, "Okay, you gave your kid a car? He killed somebody. We took your car away for 10 days. Oh, whoopee-boo. What's that family feel like?" You know? What, what consideration do we have for them? You know? This kid's in trouble, he needs to be in trouble. He needs to be taken care of. He needs to go to something. But we can't just continue to let them go and do what they want. And I would hope this young gentleman here would say, "That's a good idea, let's go to the city and see if we can get something going." You know? There's places in town that like speed. There's places in town here that those kids buy their parts from, and, and they, they can profit from it also. So, I mean, they have to do some thinking, and we have to do some thinking. And my thought is, I don't want anybody to die or be injured and handicapped for the rest of their life. Stupid is stupid. And if you want to be stupid, you won't do a damn thing. Want to be smart, you'll do something. It's time to put the hammer down and stop what's going, what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak on this issue? And I want to thank everyone who came down this afternoon to, to participate, whether you were listening into the conversation or you spoke either in support or in opposition. These are the kind of conversations we need to have at public hearings. This helps to move us forward and to improve the work that we're doing. Thank you. Yeah, I will give Captain Hubka and John Carson an opportunity to close this.
Me too.
And it sounds, Mr. Christie, there might be some questions for legal.
Johancy Christie, City Attorney, 555-South 2.
All right. Why don't you start, Mr. Show?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Mr. Christie, thanks for coming forward. Mr. Eckhold mentioned a couple of things about legally applying a penalty, or he used the word punishment. I did not go to law school. I'm thankful you went to law school, and you've seen some of these things before. Could you help us understand, are we, where are we legally on this?
So I'll do the, I'll try to do the best I can. Thank you. I, I could probably maybe take a little more time to talk about this.
I would.
And I'm certainly willing to, obviously, we're not voting today.
No, we're not.
More than willing to talk within the week with counsel as well. I would start out by saying it's not criminal. I, I understand the positions that were stated here today. I think I would submit that it is administrative, also known as collateral consequences. Even if it is, if a court was to interpret it as criminal, I think some of the examples that were here before you are examples that have been utilized in the criminal context that involve impoundings, such as, I mean, we heard DUI, DUS, we also heard, I think we heard parking illegally. If we didn't, that's another example. I think unpaid parking tickets or whatever, there are other examples of where there is impoundment that is not after a conviction. There's also, one of the things that was maybe touched on a little bit, but not, that we didn't dive in too much, is, so idea of a public nuisance. State statute 18-1720 talks about city's authority to declare what constitutes a nuisance, what constitutes a nuisance, and to abate and remove such nuisances. So if you look in the ordinances, there's, again, reference to that as well. And then when we, which I think this is sort of related to your question, but I also heard about maybe, I'm going to say notice, second offenses, I think, or second or subsequent offenses for the most part. I think that the ordinance, if you get to a second or subsequent, there will be notice prior to that, whether it's, you know, a citation, an actual ticket, or a notice to the owner before you get to a second or subsequent offense. So those are just, that would be my general high-level response to your question. And again, I'm happy to talk more throughout this week since there is a, 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 a lot more conversations. So I'd be happy to explore that some more with you, but that's my general high-level response from the dice.
Thank you.
Do other councillors have questions for Mr. Christie this afternoon? All right, thank you.
I do have a couple of questions. Officer Hubka.
Okay, let's move on.
I'm sorry, Captain.
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 Didn't mean to demote you.
No, I screwed that up, sorry.
No, you're fine, sir.
Thank you for coming forward, thank you, Madam Chair. We heard a lot of testimony from the public and from other legal officials. Can you give me ballpark figures on how many, Ms. Eggers mentioned some other things where we can issue citations for that might lead to an impoundment of a vehicle? Ballpark, how often do you, your officers do that? And a little bit about the discretion that each officer would be given.
Sure. If I, if I'm not answering your question, cut me off and redirect me. I heard a, a reference of a speed light, or running a red light, excuse me, turning into a reckless driving ticket because of a citizen being mouthy with an officer. I don't know that I've heard of anything like that in my entire career. The violation would be the violation, and a citation would be issued based upon the factors present or the elements of the crime. The number of citations for all of these violations that we've listed, reckless driving, willful reckless, is approximately for a two-year period, I believe, about 700 citations total. We obviously have great ability to not tow in certain circumstances, and so that doesn't mean that that would result in 700 toes over a two-year period. It would probably be a very much reduced number. I don't know what that number would be, off the top of my head, obviously.
So people are being cited now, is what you're saying?
For reckless driving, willful reckless driving, fleeing to avoid arrest, and, and I guess that would be it. So those, based on our current ordinances, that 700 citations are the number of citations that were issued for those violations. And not all of them, again, would apply, you know, or would require a mandatory tow.
I'm going to change gears just a little bit on you. A couple of years ago, we had an issue in the city with people losing their catalytic converters. And we changed the ordinance and stiffened the penalty on that. I considered that somewhat of an education program. Do we still have a problem with catalytic converter theft in this city?
They do still occur, but they've reduced significantly since we've implemented that ordinance.
That would be my, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Councilman Duden, and then?
There was a reference, and I'm sure you've experienced the same thing, where you're, you're stopped on a motorist, you're writing a citation, and somebody whizzes by 100 miles an hour. It's almost, it's impossible for an officer to react to something like that. In fact, if he did, then you would be driving recklessly to trying to catch up to somebody like that. So it's, it's not even practical, really, to attempt to stop somebody like that when you're, especially out of the car, stop, talking with another motorist. Wouldn't that be accurate?
Yes, I would agree with that. Yeah, we can only stop one car at a time. I would love to be able to have officers at every major intersection in the city, but there's absolutely no way that's possible.
Guys are taking calls for service.
Correct.
Backing each other up and.
Correct.
And you just, you can't be posted there like a camera, so.
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Washington. Captain Hubka, thank you for submitting to questions, I really appreciate it. Although a bit unrelated, could you speak to some of the, and if you can't, it's fine, but could you speak to some of the Memorial Day policing that occurs in this particular circumstance on O Street? Because I don't want to conflate this issue with people that appreciate cars, people that are car enthusiasts, and then folks that are willfully breaking the law as well. So can you, can you discuss sort of the circumstances that take place around Memorial Day here in Lincoln to accommodate folks in that manner?
So Memorial Day has historically been a big weekend on O Street, dating back decades here in Lincoln. Currently, our strategic plan that we utilize to ensure the safety of everyone and minimize disturbances is working with local businesses. As you referred to, we had large crowds that would gather in different private parking lots, which is in violation of city ordinance, multiple city ordinances. And so we would work with those local businesses and get approval. Do you want these crowds in your parking lot if they're not paying customers? And a lot of times, the feedback we get is, "No," because then I have, I have to clean up a ton of garbage in the morning, I have fights, I have disturbances, I have shoplifts if my store is still open. Those types of crimes come along with those large crowds. So if they're not paying customers, these businesses have So, if they're not paying customers, these businesses have asked us to assist with having people move along, which is what we do on Memorial Day weekend. So, we work with several different city agencies. We make sure that we're following all of the well-established city ordinances as far as required signage, prohibiting trespassing or loitering. And then we work with the store owners and the crowds to vacate the lot at closing time of the business or when the owners request that we do so. That's helped to minimize the traffic issues that we have because a lot of what occurred during that time was people that wanted to be doing dangerous things in front of crowds. So, if the crowds are not there, the appeal is kind of lost on that dangerous driving behavior. And so, ultimately, that's what our intent was, is to minimize dangerous driving behavior by not providing or not allowing the large audience to be present on that weekend.
Would it be fair to say that while those implements are put into place, that if someone were simply to, wanted to go out and view a classic car, cars operating, high-performance vehicles, there are other, that's an opportunity in a safer environment because of implements and restrictions, but also, there's also a variety of other ways in which to go out on a regular basis and interact with high-performance or classic cars in our community?
Yes, absolutely. I'm aware of several car shows that are hosted in the community by very reputable local organizations. That would be a great opportunity to do that in a safe environment.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you.
Any other questions for Captain Hupka? Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone, for your time. Thank you.
We appreciate your time here today, council. We appreciate everybody who came down. As has been said, every law is a balance. Every law is a balance between granting those powers that's going to enable our officers and our city teams to properly protect the health and safety of the community. And it's a balance between granting those powers and minimizing the impacts on people's ability to otherwise engage in whatever behavior they want to engage in. Telling you, your business. You know that. We think we've achieved that balance. The conversations that you've heard here today are very similar to the conversations that happen internal to the city team, internal to the Law Department trying to preserve liberty, internal to the police talking about what additional tools might be helpful to them.
Us as well.
And the council feedback, absolutely, that we've engaged in to try and find that spot. As the city attorney has said, the foundation for this is well-versed and well-understood. The ability to declare a public nuisance and to take action in order to remove that nuisance is well-defined in state law and in previous city law. So, then the question before you today is, have we found that balance? We believe we have. We believe we've found an ordinance that's in front of you that allows the police to take extra steps, extra measures to deal with dangerous driving, to increase the safety of drivers, to increase the safety of persons and personal property in these areas across the community. So, we appreciate your time to listen to all that today. You've got a week to do deliberation. All the city team is available to help answer any further questions that you might have. We appreciate your time today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carlson. And again, thank you all for coming down and participating in the hearing. Madam Clerk, I'm going to take a point of privilege. And I'm going to ask for a 10-minute break. And we'll come back and finish the agenda. Thank you. We're in short recess for 10 minutes.
Thank you, madam.